We are on item number three, adoption of the proposed 1920 operational budget. Julie, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to you.
All right, well, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Julie Underwood. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and with me today is David Munoz. He's our Senior Manager for Financial Planning and Reporting, and today we're presenting the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2019-20. Now, the budget before you today was developed to support the board's strategic goals. And the total proposed budget is projected at $547.2 million, and of this amount, the operating budget is projected at $290.4 million. And I would like to point out that the board materials before you today are 900,000 higher than the $290.4. We are asking for $290.4. After your board materials were printed, we received further information that reduced a projection that we had for the SB 84 payment by 900,000 less, so we wanted to go ahead and ask for that reduction now. And so, overall, this represents a 12.7 million or 5% increase over the prior year budget of 277.6 million. As a reminder, this request does include authorization for eight new staff positions. And so, David's going to discuss the changes that occurred in the key changes since our last presentation with you in September.
Good afternoon, David Munoz. So, the slide before you, this represents our budget year-over-year comparison, and as you can see in the chart, it's approximately $12.7 million more than the prior year. What I'd like to point out before I get into the details is that in the chart, if you'll look at the blue-colored bars, that represents everything that we discussed in September, and the gray shaded area represents new activities, new refinements, and new budget ask, and in one case, an actual reduction in budget that I'd like to go over in just brief detail today. So, I would also add that if you would like to revisit any of those key budget drivers from September, I'm prepared to do that as well. So, to get started, the first component, the first change, has to do with wage escalation, and that's a $5.3 million increase as compared to September. And just as a brief reminder, wage escalation really has to do with the costs of salaries and benefits for our existing employees. These are not new people, this is not new activities, this is just an increase in the cost of doing business. The key driver behind this $5.3 million increase here really has to do with some refinements of our baseline payroll, and just very simply stated, I would just offer to the board that in September, we took a first cut at basically calculating the cost of collectively bargained general salary increases, and after that point, we work with our partner at the Department of Finance to actually recalculate our baseline payroll based on a number of different employee compensation-related drills that we complete. It's a very normal process that we do every fall. So, as part of that, we recognize that the cost of providing those GSIs is $5.3 million more than we originally calculated. The next piece has to do with organizational growth, and just as a brief reminder, organizational growth really has to do with new people, new activities, new endeavors that the organization is taking on. And as part of our refinements since September, we took a really close look at some of our external vendor contracts, and what we had found is one of our contracts for Crowe, who was here this morning, it's our external auditor, we had found that historically, we have paid for this contract using internal reserves, and over the course of, you know, the last few years, the contract has increased significantly for some reasons I'll share with you in a moment, but the system can no longer absorb those costs internally. So, just for quick context, when we first engaged with Crowe, the contract was approximately $350,000, and today, that contract has risen to more than $2 million, and by the time that we finish the existing 10-year contract with them, that cost will increase to over $3 million. You're likely wondering why, how do you go from $350 to that amount? And there are some really good reasons for that, mostly around the area of new scope. I'll just point out a few of the big changes over the years. The first would be when we transitioned from our legacy financial reporting system to Business Direct. There's a lot of work done around that to ensure that the transition of that information into the new system was complete and accurate, and also that the design of our internal controls were operating as intended in the new system. There's also been some very complex financial reporting pronouncements, notably GASB 67, which requires a lot of additional audit work as well. And then, finally, another notable increase in scope is the fact that CalSTRS, in addition to our year-end audit, we also have Crowe take a look at our third quarter financial statements. They don't issue an opinion on that, but they do spend significant time auditing and reviewing our internal controls of that as well. And then, finally, there's actually a reduction since September, and that has to do with our state mandates. And as the name entails, state mandates are really costs that are prescribed on the system that we don't really have a lot of control over. Think of things like chaptered legislation, or, you know, control agency mandates, or other regulations, things of that nature. What had happened here is that we had overestimated costs for central services. These are costs that other agencies or other statewide costs incur, and that each state agency sort of reimburses for. So, these came in about $2.1 million less, and that's almost entirely post-employment benefit costs. And then, finally, as Julie alluded to earlier, there was a refinement in an estimate for Senate Bill 84, which is the employer, the supplemental employer contribution to CalPERS. So, we initially estimated that expense to be roughly $3.7 million, and that actually came in about $900,000 lower. So, in summary, with those sort of three moving parts, it's a net increase since September of $5.3 million. Thank you.
Okay, so we also provided you an appendix section in your materials that starts on TRB 42, and that provides you with additional information on our budgeting, including information by fund, by category, by branch, and new this year, in Appendix 6, we provided you with additional transparency related to the total spending authority. So, just to summarize what we're asking for today, we're asking for an operating budget in the amount of $290.4 million. Again, this is 900,000 less than what's in your board materials, and that request includes authorization for eight new staff positions. There's also two other items we're asking for you to approve today. These are annual requests to you. The first one is to authorize the availability of the savings that we might have in our annual appropriations, up to 3%. That would be rolled over, and if needed, and if approved by the board, we could use those additional funds. We're also asking for an additional 5% of budget authority over and above what's currently budgeted in the Teachers Deferred Compensation Fund. Now, this is for the Pension 2 program, so if they're continuing to have success in growing the program, and they've used the expenditures that are budgeted, and they have additional revenues up to that 5% or $100,350, they could use that to continue to grow the program without additional board authority. So, I did want to share with you, we did receive the Government Finance Officers Association's Award, the distinguished budget award. Staff worked really hard to put together a budget book that met the GFOA's requirements for the 1819 budget, and they did submit it, and it won the award, so I wanted to let you know about that. Thank you. We do plan on doing this again because they did such a great job, and we really like the book, and we want to continue doing it. And so, I just want to thank staff for their hard work putting this together, and congratulate them on this first-year accomplishment. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have anybody in line, anybody in line, but I just want to make sure that there's a couple of terms in here I just want to make sure that I understand correctly. So, when we talk about updated position classification information, that's like when people move from, and I don't know any of the state's classifications, but it's when they move from one state classification into another between the two budget periods? Is that, am I correct in thinking that?
Yes, so when we refer to that, it's, you know, it could be an employee that is in one classification and then gets a promotion to another, which is most common. So, yeah, and a lot of times in a, well, actually, and all the time in a promotion, when you do that, you actually increase costs to the system, so.
And then blanket positions, I wasn't sure what that meant.
Yes, so blanket positions is, and I could talk for a long time about this, but just in general, blanket positions is a budgetary tool that agencies can use to basically, to basically, deal isn't the right word, but sort of work with the ebbs and flows of the natural business cycles without going through the normal budgetary process. So, a blanket position is if we have some temporary work come through that was unexpected, if we have the money to hire that the board has approved, we could actually hire those positions on a temporary basis and work through that temporary workload.
And generally, we can do that because we have savings from our vacancies, and again, it's temporary, and then the next budget cycle, the expectation would be we would request a BCP to add that position. We're currently looking at our structure for blanket positions and making some refinements in those areas, and doing some policies around making sure that we do keep those as temporary positions, and then come to you with the BCP in the next cycle.
Okay. And then, my last question has to do with the chart that is on TRB 33. It's a three-year overview, revenues, expenses, and in 1718, our expenses were about half as much as our revenue, but that percentage is growing. And I'm wondering if we're tracking that any further than just those three years, to see if there's a trend where the expenses are encroaching further into the revenue.
Well, I can tell you, we're consistently looking at the expenditures that we're budgeting for and trying to find ways that we can reduce expenditures in areas that we can, and certainly, one of the ways of doing that is looking historically to see, you know, what have we spent, what have we not spent, you know, what savings are carrying forward, and is there any savings that we can find when we're budgeting? You know, clearly, with hiring new staff, we're going to see increases in expenditures just for salaries and benefits in the normal course of providing those salary increases. But yes, we are continually in our budget process, looking at our expenditures and trying to find ways to save.
But I would imagine, as we're bringing more in-house while our salaries are going up, so those costs are going to increase, we should be bringing, hopefully, more revenue in, so maybe the ratio stays the same? But we're tracking that regardless?
Yes.
That ratio? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All righty, this is an action item. Entertain a motion to approve.
It's been moved.
Been moved, seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All righty, the motion passes. Julie, you have a budget. Thank you. All right, our next two items, approval of the annual incentive of the Chief Executive Officer, number four. Trying to find it on a...
TRB 55.
Thank you. I was getting there.
There is an advantage to people.
There is, it doesn't take quite as long to get there. And so, this would be approved, the incentive award. Is there a motion? Betty is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Karen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Abstentions? That has been approved. Then, item number five is the annual incentive for the Chief Investment Officer. That would be on 58. Entertain a motion. Betty is moved. Joy is seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? That also has been approved. So, if we can move into the RFP scope, and Melissa, do you want to come up here so you can back me up if need be? So, this currently is the position held by Grant Thornton. They are independent, I want to say independent project oversight consultant. They are a consultant to the board.
Who's your wingwoman?
Sorry, sorry, Melissa. See, I just went straight to Human Resources. Sorry, Cassandra.
That's okay.
You can see the scope of the work? And they're definitely independent of staff. They do report to the board. Are there any questions? Do we need any detail?
I just want to just clarify something.
Okay, so I have three people. Cassandra, did you want to add to that by any chance? I'm kind of playing by speed-up rules here.
Okay, you know, no, really, it's just to make sure that you're comfortable with the scope of work as we have it outlined, and then we can issue the RFP, and then the other decision point would be how you want to move forward with the selection process, if you want to participate as a body of, the whole body, or a subcommittee, and how you want staff involved to help you through the process.
I was going to go through the RFP first, and then we can talk about how we would do that. All righty, Betty?
I'll wait, Dana, but my comments were about the selection process.
Okay. Steve?
Just a quick question. So, we're going out to get either a new one, or I assume that Grant Thornton can also apply again? And this is, so this isn't a reflection on anything, it's just the expiration of the contract?
It's just the expiration of the contract.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Karen?
I kind of think that was it, but I just want to make sure that I understand, when Grant Thornton gives a report to us, sometimes it's referred to as IPOSS, and this is referring to an IPOC. Is that the same thing?
Yes, they stand for different things. IPOSS, Independent Project Oversight Council.
Okay.
And IPOSS is Independent Project Oversight. I don't know what the SS is. Services.
But it's the same thing for this particular...
Yes, it's the same.
Okay. Because you know how I don't understand acronyms in the pension solution.
That's okay, she started to throw me off there. I'm like, what?
My list.
Absolutely. Paul?
Thank you. So, I'm just, we get a lot of contracts that are sole source just to continue them, and why in this case are we not just continuing this contract at the end? I mean, it seems, it seems that we've got, you know, a contractor who's been extremely involved in a project, and to get somebody new up to speed would be a big challenge. So, I don't understand, because we get so many sole-source contracts at every meeting, usually to extend somebody's contract. Why in this case are we not doing that?
So, Cassandra, can I take a stab at that? Because I think I know the answer. Well, maybe I better not, in this case, I have the wrong answer. I'm thinking, we've never done a consultant to the board as a sole-source contract. We've always put it out for our RFP, or we've extended it by the terms of what we have in the contract.
Well, and this is not a sole-source contract, and there are competitors in the market, and we haven't, that would like to...
No, I understand that, but I mean, a lot of times, we extend contracts when there's certainly somebody else who would like to compete for that, but we get on our agenda almost every meeting some, you know, sole-source contract.
We've exercised all the extensions.
Yeah, we don't bring an extension to you if the contract has exhausted what we put in the RFP. And just to be fair, we really rarely sole-source contracts here. I'm so against that idea. So, rarely do they make it through the gate a sole-source to you unless there was some special reason for that. And we did have a, this is a, unfortunately, you're going to learn a state procurement nuance here, but when there is one bidder to a contract, even though it was competitively bid, it's tend to be viewed as a sole-source. We have had a situation with a board consultant where there was just one bidder.
Got it.
So, it got termed that. So, that was that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Jack.
Can't, yeah.
Bang, I'm sorry. Paul, did you have anything else?
No, I, so, the, you know, we're going to have an item later on, as we always do, contracts requiring board approval, so those are usually extensions of an existing contract under the terms of the existing contract.
They're beyond my delegation.
You gave me some additional room for extending contracts some time ago, but there are still contracts, they're so large that require your approval of the extension.
Okay.
Because they're above the million-dollar level, so that's just the way we've done that with you. I mean, we do do sole-source, but it's, you know, it's, especially for a large contract, that's not the best.
All right, Betty?
I don't know the answer to this question, which is why I wanted to just see. So, with respect to the scope of this contract, and this is still a ways off, but how does the scope of work relate to either this consultant or another consultant that we would be bringing in to do the post-implementation and evaluation work? This is more real-time kind of monitoring the project, right?
Yep.
So, at what point do we start thinking about the peer?
The peer. The peer, later in the project, when you would do the peer report. How would these services differ than what the services that would be offered by the peer vendor?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're still in the design and development phase. So, when we think that is needed, at that time, we will come back. We'll go through the, we have two choices, we can go through our own state process, or we can go out, the competitive bidding.
I guess the reason I'm asking is that the peer, the peer report is kind of a look-back, right?
Post-implementation report, yeah.
So, it seems to me, you probably want to have somebody independent of this contractor, kind of looking back.
Yeah, so I think we can...
Yeah, I would pick someone different myself.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to understand.
And that would go out for RFP as we get closer to the completion of the project, correct?
That'll be a joyous moment when it's time for your report.
Yes, absolutely. They'll be dancing in the hallways.
We will do that with a smile when it's time for that bid.
Okay, all righty. Anything else, Betty?
All righty, then I entertain a motion to approve the... Oh, I'm sorry, the selection process? Are we going to talk about that? I was going to do the RFP scope first, and then we can get into the process of selection. Oh, Joy, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question. So, when does the current contract expire? So, what's the timing of the process?
I think it's the end of June, 2019, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we should have this process completed by then.
Yes.
All righty. So, Betty, I'm going to put you back. Getting this down. So, I entertain a motion to approve the RFP. Did we do, did somebody move it?
I'll move.
All righty, any further second?
No, I did, but I will move it.
Okay, it's been moved by Betty, seconded by Sharon. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All righty, we're approving the RFP. So, then, it's the selection process. We have done selections in several different ways. Sometimes we direct staff to manage the selection process. They might bring us a couple of finalists, we'd interview the finalists, or we can actually have a couple of members of the board sit in on that screening. So, it's the pleasure of the board of how you would like to do that. So, Betty, if you have an opinion, I've got you up.
I do, I do. I would like to actually engage a subcommittee of the board on the screening and the final selection process. Again, it's one of the larger endeavors of this organization, and I think the board should really fully engage on something like this.
So, just so everybody knows, that subcommittee of the board, to keep it out of open meeting or Bagley Keen notifications and things like that, correct, would be two members. So, usually, when we do a subcommittee, it's two members. Brian?
If I can just clarify.
Yes.
So, this board, I know, is assiduous in its adherence to Bagley Keen, but as you've gone through these processes before, what you've found is the most facile process for you is to have two board members delegated to participate in the process, and then you can have staff participate, but they're not voting members, but they can be active participants. And that allows for the sort of, the ability to do these things rather quickly between meetings, and then it would not be considered a meeting under Bagley Keen, fitting the open meeting laws.
So, Betty, is that parameter okay with you?
Yes.
All righty, and then you had said something about a subcommittee of the board to do the screening and the final selection, but are you thinking about bringing the finalists to the board for the full interview?
Yes.
All righty. You want to put that forward as a motion?
Yes. I move that we engage a subcommittee of the board on the screening and the final selection process for this RFP with the final decision before the full board.
All righty. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Well, would this get a second?
Second.
So, it's been moved and seconded. Brian?
I apologize. I revise the motion to say the board will delegate two members to participate in the selection process, and I certainly understand the intention of the controller, it's just the language under Bagley Keen on subcommittee is a little bit confusing, so thank you for your patience.
And thank you for your clarification. We want to make sure that we do what we need to do correctly. All righty, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion is passed. So, Cassandra, we have our walking papers. How's that? Super. All righty, moving right on, we have Rick and David coming up.
We're bringing George, too.
All right.
Oh, my gosh.
Hey, George.
The whole team.
I was going to say, they have a guest.
Yes.
All right, this is item number seven, review of CalSTRS funding levels and risks.
So, we'll try to be brief. Late afternoon, board members. We're going to present our annual funding risk report, and it's been worked on by David and Jordan and the extra staff. But before we get into the report, for those who are new, we passed a funding plan back in 2014, so it's been almost five years, and by law, we are to make a report to the legislature on how this plan is working. Even though it's been five years, I think it's important and very helpful to understand that there was really a two-year delay in the implementation of the plan, so that the funding situation continued to deteriorate without much assistance for about two years. So, members started to contribute extra right away, but the employers in the state contributed very little extra. So, it didn't ramp up until 2016, and still, we have not contributed what we would recommend to be contributed by either the state or the employers. And so, that's not going to occur until later on. So, the other thing I'd like to remind the board is that years ago, 1972, there was the E. Richard Barnes Act that was passed to start some pre-funding on the CalSTRS. Before that, there was very little funding of the benefits in CalSTRS. It was funded a lot by inheritance taxes and other types of budget situations, so the funding was very poor. It was under 30%. We passed a bill to increase member contribution rates to 8%, and the employers began to increase their funding until they hit 8% seven years later in 1979. So, our current funding situation, our current funding structure, has some resemblance to that funding situation. So, I think those things are helpful, we keep that in mind as we go along, because when the next recession occurs, there'll be people that are saying it's not working, but in actuality, it is working according to way the structure was set up. Yes, yes, they'll say that now. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to David to actually go into the report.
Thank you, Rick. And before I start, I've asked Jordan to come sit here today, and I just want to acknowledge, because he's the one that did all the heavy lifting behind all of the analysis that you will see today, so I just want to thank him for that. all of the analysis that you'll see today. So I just want to thank him for that. So as you know, we generally come to you twice a year. In May is generally when we present to you the results of the valuation. And then in November, when we present you the risk report, this is kind of when we like to talk to you about kind of the future. I think Paul made reference to it, you know, what could go wrong, what could, you know. I think it's good for all, all of us, all of you to sort of always kind of see like what could go wrong, what could prevent us to reach full funding. So in the report that we prepared for you, we did mention that as a result of the good investment year we had last year, we earned 9%, which was above 7%. Everything is looking a little bit better than it did in May, and we'll show you that. But one of the main points we want to make today is although things are looking a little bit better today, we have to keep in mind that we will, you know, we are still at risk, especially from the investment side. We've all seen what the month of October brought to us. So we will show you throughout this report how although we are in a better position today, one of my main message for you today will be as time goes by, especially the closer we get to 2046, it's gonna become harder and harder for us to withstand like some levels of stress. So I'm gonna try to show you that today. And one of the big driver, we've talked about this the last three years each time we've presented to you the report, but it's important to bring it back every time. It's what we, we, we keep referring to the fact as a, as a retirement system, we're, we're more mature. And it's something that all retirement systems in the U.S. are experiencing. So just want to, once again, show you what do we mean by this. And the first chart I like to show every year, so you can probably expect me to show this, we update it every year. But, you know, we, we are continuing to see, this is a chart showing you the number of active members in our system to the number of retirees. So back in the early 70s, we had six active members for each retirees. Today, we're about one and a half. And you can see, you know, we, we expect to continue down on that path over the next 30 years. There'll be a point in time where we will come back to you and tell you, we now have as many retirees as we have active members. And this is important, the reason I like to point that out is you have to keep in mind, we collect contributions as a percentage of payroll. But when something happens, like, like, let's say we have an investment loss, not only did we lose, you know, investment income on the assets that were set aside for the active teachers, but we also lose it on the assets that were set aside for the retired teachers. So now we not only have to collect money for the, we not only have to collect contributions to make up the difference for the active teachers, but also the retired teachers. So the, the more, as that ratio goes down, it's gonna put basically more pressure on contribution rates. This is a chart also, the main point I'd like to, to show here, so this is our projection of cash flows going forward. In the January item three, when we talked about the budget, there was a question about revenues and expenses. And on that chart, it actually included contributions and benefit payments that we expect to pay. So what you have in front of you, the red line are our expected benefit payments from fiscal year 1718 all the way through 57, 58, so 40 years' worth of benefit payments. And the three bars, the bars, you see the three colors are the contributions we receive, members, employers, and the state. And the main thing I want to point out, we've mentioned that every year, we started in 1999 was the first year where we paid more in benefits that we collected in contributions. And the main message from me to you today is we will never have what I call positive cash flows. Our, our benefit payments will always exceed contributions. It's, it's expected of a pension fund, so it's just something to, to be aware. As a result of the funding plan passing and contribution rates increasing, we've gone from about a $6 billion shortfall before the funding plan, and last year, it was down to about $3 billion. But as you can see here on the chart, it's only gonna increase year after year. And it's something that we monitor, Julie's team monitors it, and we also, we monitor it on our side. We have an ALM team now internally, and this is also something that's gonna be taken into account when we do the next asset allocation review. Now, the next chart I want to show you, I've presented this to you in the past. It's what we, we like to call our asset volatility ratios. It's simply a comparison of how big are our assets compared to payroll, okay? I'll just, so if you look at this, it used to be in 1975, our assets were about equal to payroll. Today, it's about a little bit over 6. And as you can see, it's, it's, it's projected to go to 9, 10, eventually 11. And here's why it matters. And I've shown you this in the past. I'll show it to you again, because it is extremely important to understand this and why, why our ability to basically withstand investment stress in the future is gonna be limited. If you go back in 1975, where our ratio was one, so assets equal payroll, if we had a 10% investment loss, so for us as actuaries, we view the moment we earn less than 7%, we view this as a, as a return below expectation, there's four, there's an actual loss. So for us, when we look at a 10% investment loss, we're talking about a negative 3% return. So 10% different than what we assume. In 1975, when we had a ratio of one, it would have taken about 0.5% of payroll to pay that off over a 30-year period. So here, we're assuming a 30-year funding period. Today, or in 2017, when you have a ratio of six, you talk about a 3% of payroll change. Now, it's important, because if you recall our funding plan, the, as a board, we can only increase the state contribution rate by half a percent. So that would take us six years to bring it to that level. In 2035, again, if we had a 30-year funding period, I'll get to the, to a different funding period after that, it would take, it would require an immediate increase of 5% to pay it off over 30 years. For us, it would take us 10 years to get to that at 5%, at half a percent a year. And the ratio of 11, same thing, you see, it would take us much longer. But yes, Dana.
I just have somebody, Steve, are you okay if he finishes this slide? Do you want to ask now?
I just go back to one slide.
Okay, go ahead.
So, one more.
This one.
You made the comment that pension funds invariably never have positive cash flow. Is that true across the board, David?
No, I think it's more, if you look at any kind of, most mature pension funds today, if you look at them, they're all gonna have negative cash flows. I think it's a, once a system or plan enters a certain stage in their life, if you want, it, it is expected to have negative cash flows in perpetuity. So that's mostly the main comment I wanted to make, is we should not look at this as an issue by itself. There's nothing to be alarmed about. It's just something you have to take into consideration as you administer your system, but.
It doesn't represent any risk to the integrity of the long-term payout, if in fact.
No, it does not, because in fact, when we pay a benefit, in reality, we've now extinguished a liability that we had to pay that benefit. So.
Thank you.
So, now, the other thing I wanted to kind of remind everyone is, so we have a funding plan with an expiration date of 2046. So when it was passed, what the legislation said is attempt to reach full funding over the next 32 years. So we technically have a 32-year funding period. That's what we had in 2014. But it's a fixed date. So now, every year, when we, after we've, you know, realized, once, once we know what the investment return was for the year, and we have a new, we've readjust our unfunded actual obligation, we now try to pay it over an ever-decreasing period. So in the last valuation, we were, now we're down to 28 years. When, by 2036, we're gonna have only 10 years left. So the reason why it's important here is as we go through time, not only are we gonna be more mature, which if we have an investment loss, it's gonna result in the need for higher contribution rate, but we also have a declining funding period. So I just want to show again the same example, if we had a three, a negative 3% loss, investment return, so a 10% loss. Today, with a 30-year funding period, we need to increase rates by 3%. For the state, it would take us six years. When we're down to 20-year funding period, our, it's gonna mean we will need to resolve to increase the rates by about 5%. Again, it would take us 10 years. But what I want to point out is the last one, so by 2036, let's say we have a 10% investment loss in 2036, 10 years from the end of the funding plan. If we wanted to be able to pay it off by 2046, we would need to increase the rates immediately by 10% of payroll, which would make it very hard to do. So I think that's just something to keep in mind as, as we go through, through the years, as we approach the end of the funding plan. If we were to have a year where we have, you know, a significant investment loss, it's gonna be very hard to recover without some kind of new solution to, to help us reach full funding. Any questions before I move on? Okay. So the, what I want to show you now was sort of the, so last year, we reported a 9% investment return. And I just wanted to show you with the rules in the funding plan, what does that mean to us? Okay? So last June, this is what we showed you, we're about 63% funded. We expect to reach 100% funded by 2046. Since 9% is just a little bit higher than what we assume, now you can see we're now just slightly higher, and we expect our funded status to, again, slowly increase over time and still reach 100% funded. Now, contribution rates, this is the picture we showed you last May when we presented the valuation report. We told you that the state contribution rate would keep increasing for the next few years until reaching close to 10% of payroll. And we had basically told you that the employer contribution rate would eventually level off at about 18.1%. So we would basically go to you, once you have authority to adjust it, to request a reduction in rate. Now, what I want you to focus on here is the blue line and the orange line, so you can see the rules of our funding plan as to where we now expect the rates to go as a result of the 9% return. So now, if you pay attention, the blue goes down, but the orange goes up, whoops, sorry, let me go back. The orange goes up slightly, just slightly. So right now, if someone asks us, like, what do you expect for the employer contribution rate, we now expect it to be 18.2% instead of 18.1. Again, it's just the rules in the funding plan make it so the employer contribution rate generally moves in opposite direction of the state, by small amounts, but in opposite direction. And the other thing here to notice is the state contribution rate is the one most impacted by investment performance. So in this case, we simply beat our return by 2%, 9 instead of 7. We're now expecting the state rate to peak just above 9%. So the state contribution rate is now projected to be about almost 1% lower because we beat our return by 2%. Now, you can quickly do the opposite calculation. If we were to have a return below expectation, then the state contribution rate would have to increase dramatically. I don't know if you recall, two years ago, when you adopted our new actual assumptions, we were telling you we were expecting the state contribution rate to go to about 13.5%. And then we had two good years of investment return, and it's now down to 9. So that projection could easily go up or down further depending on how the investment return works. So that's the main thing. But the main, my main message here today is remember that the state bears most of the investment return risk, and that the employer contribution rate, although it doesn't move as much, moves in opposite direction. And you'll be able to see that throughout my, my presentation today. But that's basically what the 9% return did. Now, to our unfunded actual obligation. So this is what we showed you last May. So what you have here, you have three colors. One of them is harder to see because it's become smaller and smaller. The orange is the employer's share of the, our total unfunded actual obligation. So today, it's about $67 billion. Then the blue is the state share. And then, if you look at the top, there's a slight gray sliver, a little line of gray at the top. This is what we've often talked to you about as the, what we call our unallocated portion. This is the portion of the unfunded liability for which you, as a board, cannot adjust contribution rates to eliminate it. So the only way this number will disappear under current rules would be if we earn more than what we assume. So, and that number, I think when we brought that, that topic to you two years ago for the first time, I think at that time, the amount was almost a billion dollar. Then we had two years of good investment return, and now that amount, as we estimate it to be about $200 million. But the main, like, usually when I tell people, when I talk to people about the unallocated, my main message is since we have no mechanism to eliminate it, think about it as factor of five. So by 2046, it's gonna be five times bigger than it is today. So today, we're estimate this amount to be about $1 billion in 2046. So as we discuss our review of the funding plan next year, this is something that we may want to talk about when we have that discussion in January as to whether or not we want, you know, we want to bring this up to the legislature. And now, what I want to show you is, this is what we showed you in May, and I'm gonna show you what the impact of the 7% investment return did. So you can see the, if I go slowly, the blue reduced, but the orange went up slightly. So which is, again, the rules in the funding plan, now the employers have a slightly bigger share of our overall unfunded actual obligation, the state share is lower. So that's basically, just keep that in mind. And again, you can see that the blue moved much more than the orange, which is why the state contribution rate is more sensitive. Just, again, just keep that in mind. State contribution rate is much more sensitive to investment experience than the rest. Any questions on this so far? Okay. Now, what I want to just show you real quick is, there are a lot of lines here. I just want you to focus, so these are the two charts that so you've seen so far. So on the top left, you have our projection of the funding, of the funded status. We're about 63%. It's projected to hit 100% or by 2046. And you have the blue line, which is the state contribution rate on the bottom right chart, and the orange is the employer rate. So this is our current projection reflecting the 9% return we had. So in the report, we talk about the risk. What if we were to have a sustained period of low investment return? Would we be able to sustain, like, how much would we be able to sustain and still reach an acceptable level by 2046? And again, we talked about it a bit last year. It's worthwhile to show it again. Now, all I want you to do, I'll go quick through these slides. I just want you to look mostly for now at the bottom chart, at the blue bar. What I'm gonna go through is different scenarios. What if we earn 6.5, 6% and so forth? And I want you to see what happens to the orange and the blue. So now, all I did is I said, okay, what if we earn 6.5% for the next 10 years, and then back to 7? So I'm gonna go back. You can see the blue goes up, and the orange went down slightly. But you can see the orange, it's hard to tell by how much it moves. It doesn't move that much, but the blue, you can see, now we're saying the state rate's gonna be about 12%. And you can see in this case, because we still have room to change the state contribution rate, we still reach full funding. Now, 6%, same thing, state rate goes up, orange goes down a little, we still reach full funding. 5.5%. Now, we've used all the room that we have for the state. That's, that's the maximum rates we could ever set under the current rules. And now, because of that, we're no longer able to reach full funding. You can see on the top line, we're a little, we're at about 97%. Now, if we earn 5%, again, we can't, we couldn't move the blue bar any further. So now, what you're gonna see from now on is mostly, the blue bar on the bottom chart's gonna remain the same, but the funded status one's gonna start dropping. So you can see, it drops.
The orange line keeps dropping.
But the orange line, now, if you were to ask me, why is the orange line moving this way? The rules in our funding plan, if you remember the first presentation to you, take from our consultant, Milliman, after the funding plan was passed, Mark Allman from Milliman said, "This is the most complicated funding arrangement I've ever worked on." The rules are crazy. Even for us, sometime, we look at the result, we say, is that real? We realize, yes, those are the rules. So that's why sometime, you can kind of see here how the, how the employer, like, you know, to me, it's hard to explain, like, why would we lower the employer contribution rate when we, we know we're not gonna reach 100% funded? But just, so, you know, at some point, I don't know if next year is the right time, but, you know, I'm not, it's difficult to explain those rules, but when we bring a report to the legislature, at some point, it may be worthwhile to see if there's a way to simplify how the plan works. But the rules that we have in place, they work, but they create some of these situations where rates don't move necessarily in the directions you, you would think they should move. But the main message here for us is because the stake, the state bears most of the investment risk responsibility, as long as we have room to adjust the state contribution rate, we will be able to get near full funding. It's once we reach that limit that we start to lack the ability. So what we did with our, as part of our analysis, we tried to identify, okay, and I know we hear, I forgot to point that out, is we decided. and I know here, I forgot to point that out, is we decided for this analysis to see how low, or, you know, what kind of low returns could we sustain to still reach about 90% funded in 2046? And the reason we picked 90% instead of 100% is once the funding plan expires by 2046, we're set to go back to the same contribution rates that were in place prior to the funding plan. And right now, these contribution rates would be at a level that would be sufficient as long as we're 90% funded or more to keep those funding levels the same. Anything below 90%, and we would be once again on a path toward lower funded status and eventually running out of money. So what we said is, okay, what could we sustain for five years, 10 years, and 15? So you see the numbers here. But what I wanted to show you next is, this is if you asked me that question today. Now, if you asked me that same question in 10 years, the answer is gonna be different, and we're not gonna be able to sustain as low a return as we can today. And this is how it looks. So you can see, today, we tell you, we could have 3.75% return for the next five years and still reach 90%. 10 years from now, the answer's gonna be 4 and a quarter. So you can kind of see, and if we did that 20 years from now, same thing, the returns would, these thresholds would be much higher. So again, it's just something that we have to keep in mind is, I know the end of the funding plan seems far, but sometimes, time goes by fast. And 10 years from now, you know, we're gonna be, it's gonna be, it's just gonna be harder and harder over time to, if something were to go south, if you want, to recover from it. So that would be basically one of the main messages I want you to remember today. Question? Okay? So again, just to show you this again, one little example of this, we said, again, so this is our starting slide. What if we had a one bad year? And for this, we picked a negative 13% return. We picked it because based on our current portfolio, it has about a 5% chance of happening. So we said, what if it happens in five years? So you can see, again, the state contribution rate would increase at maximum. We don't really reach 90, full funding in 10 years and in 15 years. And again, the point I want to make here is the same thing, is that the later it happens, the harder it is to recover.